It was the night before Christmas and Santa had a boner. He wanted a whore, so he picked up his cell and phoned her. He licked, fingered and plowed the wet bacon hole and the cracked out whore rode Santa's stiff, veiny meat pole. When all of a sudden there arose such a clatter, it was Mrs. Claus and Jesus Christ did she get fatter. "You cheating son of a bitch!" She screamed. The whore just laughed as Santa's ass was reamed. "I can't explain!" Santa shouted. "Yeah, we're just friends!" Said the whore as she dismounted. Santa groveled, cried and pleaded, "I love you, honey." Mrs. Claus just laughed and said, "Yeah? Well, I've been fucking the Easter bunny." The divorce was messy and Santa lost it all. He even gave up the elves during that frightful legal brawl. Santa couldn't do it alone, so Christmas was no more. But the elves had it worse, for they were prisoners of war. Kids were pissed without toys under their trees. Those fucking cunt turds learned the hard way that in life, there are no guarantees. Fat and broke, Santa turned to booze. Why the fuck not? He had nothing else to lose. He took long strained pisses in the middle of the streets and rolled weed with thrown out paper receipts. Getting high all day, he was quite the pathetic display. Then one night, he had an idea while lying in a ditch. "Oh, stop feeling sorry for myself when I kill that bitch." So he hitched a ride back to the North Pole to kill the cunt who broke his soul. Mrs. Claus was fast asleep in her king sized water bed and was promptly shot dead with a bullet to her head. The sound of happy clops came from the battered reindeer and the bruised little elves were merry with cheer. Mrs. Claus was a sexual tyrant, you see, and made all of Santa's beloved friends her detainees. Whipped and beaten, she was an S and M demon. Her face would turn red when her urges would come upon. No elf could escape the wrath of her strap on. When the elves heard the gun that caused the hag's brain to splatter, they knew they'd never again be forced to eat fecal matter. Santa and helpers were once again reunited. Christmas returned and the children were delighted. So ends this tale of the most holy of nights. Yet no mention of Jesus. That was a slight oversight. Like kids give a shit about a baby and some wise men. They just want new toys every year, again and again. Yeah, you may have gotten stuck with a deadbeat dad, but mom will feel guilty and buy you an Apple iPad. Christmas isn't about Christ, don't you see? It's about getting as much expensive stuff as you can for free. Now lay the fuck down or Crumpus will drag you to hell. With that parting thought, good night and sleep well.
It's Christmas!
Join your Christmas presents?
Could you whip out your nice big present for me?
Santa treats everybody right.
Want to know what to give the family this Christmas? Give them diarrhea!
You're gonna get absolutely nuts!
Absolutely nuts!
That's what Christmas is about, Jesus Christ!
Christmas only comes once a year, baby.
Oh yeah, rocking fucking walls!
I'm dreaming also, bud.
Merry Christmas, everybody!
Hey! It's a blast from the past, our old intro music, eh freaks? It's Thursday, December 22nd, 2022, coming up on the program today. An S and M dominatrix speaks at a city council meeting, calling the cops to complain about your confiscated weed, and Christopher Columbus, space shuttle explosions and child exploitation. A Galileo 2333 conspiracy theory.
It's The Distorted View Show with Tim Henson.
Yes, Tim Henson back here with you one more time this week before we close up shop for the holidays. Got a good one for you. Getting ready for my big trip up north, you know, in Ohio. I'm not leaving Ohio, it's just like, you know, four and a half hour drive. I'm getting so many messages from family members saying, "You better leave early. There's gonna be a big storm." That's all I've been hearing about for the past week or so is this huge, uh, snowstorm that's forming. I keep looking at the weather apps though, and there's nothing out of the ordinary forecast wise. It's all like standard shit, your normal winter weather. I mean, there's like, it's gonna rain and then, uh, the weather, the temperature's gonna drop and there's gonna be some snow. No mention of squalls or blizzards. Meanwhile, you know, the news is reporting this is going to be a once in a generation snowstorm. Hundreds, if not thousands, will perish. Y'all are gonna be without power? You're gonna be up to your goddamn tits in snow? You're gonna have nothing to eat? You're gonna be stuck in a house with your annoying family members for days? Cannibalism is probably gonna have to be on the table. Things have the potential to get messy, you know? Hypothermia? Homicide? Human trafficking? Sure, why not? That's another H word. Come on, we all have that one creepy uncle who's like always with a scared foreign woman. He says it's his new wife, but she won't look at him directly in the eye and she cowers whenever he raises his voice. Something just seems off there. "Hey Uncle Gary, why does your new wife..." What's her name? Lomane? Lomau? "Why does Lomau pee her pants every time you laugh too loud?" "Ah, she's just joking around with you. She's trying to make you laugh." Okay, well, I guess that's kind of funny, but why is she under the table? She's shaking. Making all of our drinks spill. And why was no one invited to their wedding? And whenever he mentions their bedroom, he accidentally says kennel. It's truly bizarre. I guarantee you though, you know, whenever the news makes a big deal about an upcoming snowstorm, some cataclysmic event, it's always super underwhelming. Here's something to watch out for, a red flag if you will. If you see the meteorologist on before his normal segment, if the weatherman gets to be a part of the news, it's gonna be bullshit. You know, it's like it's his time to shine, so he's super excitable. It's very performative. "Guys, get ready for the big one." You know, he kind of sounds like Don West selling beanie babies. "Folks, I don't say this very often, but prepare for the big one. Wind gusts of 300 miles an hour. We're expecting anywhere between nine and 38 feet of snow." Meanwhile, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be a balmy 78. I guarantee you, I'm gonna need shorts this weekend. They always get it so very wrong. But okay, whatever, I'm gonna listen to my family. I'm gonna head up, uh, early, early, early. I guess today, when you guys, when most people are listening to the podcast on Thursday, I'm gonna have to fucking roll out of bed in the morning. And by morning, I mean like 10 a.m. I'm not gonna get up super early for this. No, I expect to be on the road by 10:00. I should be able to get up to Ashtabula, assuming there's no calamity, uh, around, what, two or three in the afternoon? It'll all be fine. Looking forward to seeing, uh, all of the, the whole Henson clan, really. Can't wait to tell my family about my mom's new social media influencer status. Uh, her video on my Instagram feed has, uh, reached just about 800,000 views. I'm hoping by Christmas, we'll get to that magic million mark. If you're not following me on Instagram, please do so and then watch Patty Henson and share the video. It's her reading some ridiculous Cards Against Humanity card. People seem to like that. All right, listen, uh, I do have a bunch of great audio to share with you before we call it a week. First up, we have a man who is very upset because his pot was stolen. That is very annoying, especially this time of year. Some of my favorite holiday memories are, uh, me being stoned. I never brought like pot to the family Christmas, but, uh, my cousin did. He was the real MVP of the holidays. He would also smoke cigarettes, so, you know, once in a while, he'd be like, "I'm gonna go out and, uh, and smoke. Tim, why don't you come out and talk with me? Keep me company." But really, we would go in his car and we'd pack a pipe full of that woolly woolly woo woo. Oh, we would get silly and then, uh, we would rejoin the family and, uh, things would just be so much better. One thing I've noticed as I, uh, have gotten older and I don't really smoke pot anymore is, um, I get, it's so strong, right? That pot smell, right? It lingers. I can't tell you how many times Cincinnati, everyone is just fucking lighting up fatties in their car, I guess. I don't know. Lord Dush and I smell it all the time, like when we're, we're just like driving on like a main street and a car will pass us. Our windows are all up, by the way, it's winter, right? But we can just, that smell of pot comes pouring out. It is like super noticeable. So I'm sure after cheeching out with my cousin in a confined vehicle and then, you know, just like walking back into the house, I'm sure we reeked of this stuff. I don't think my mom knows what pot smells like though. By the way, woolly woolly woo woo. I think that's like when you mix marijuana with heroin or something or crack. We didn't do that. We were just, uh, you know, mowing the grass, hooking up. Now, like I mentioned, the, uh, the clip I have for you is a guy very upset because his pot was stolen. The pot was stolen by cops. That also means confiscated. The cops confiscated this guy's pot. So now he's calling 911. He thinks there's been a crime that's been committed. Him not being able to smoke that jolly green dinky doo? Well, that certainly is a crime in his opinion. Let's see how this, uh, 911 call all plays out.
Hello, police, this is Cindy.
Hi, I need to do a complaint about two Sharonville cops. They stole my fucking weed last night.
Okay, let me have you talk to a supervisor.
By the way, Sharonville? If it's the same Sharonville I'm thinking of, it's, uh, right here in Cincinnati. I'm there all the time. The Culvers is there. I go to, I go to Sharonville, uh, for the burgers, not the pot.
All right.
But I'm just, moment.
Yeah, she's gonna transfer you to the complaint line. Sure, you'll be able to, uh, get this pot right back.
Hello?
And? Hi, uh, is this the sheriff?
This is Sergeant Mark Dudelson with the Sharonville Police. How can I help you?
All right, my name's Phil. I had two cops come here last night and steal my fucking weed and I want it back.
Okay, where, what, what address are you talking about?
Yeah, I was, I was staying at a hotel last night at the night, at the time. My wife had some problem, they had to call them and my wife had my weed in their purse and the motherfucking cops took it. It was only like four grams, but it was really good fucking weed. It was only like four grams, but it was like, you know, prestige weed.
This shit was gold medal weed. That's why he's so pissed off. He wouldn't be angry if it was some skunky ass weed. No, no, this is award winning primo shit. Blork over those buds asshole!
And the motherfuckers took it. And from what I know, 100 grams is cool, right? Or am I wrong?
You are wrong.
Well, that put an end to that argument, right? Somehow though, this call goes on for another four minutes.
I'm wrong.
What do you mean by that? Do you think it's cool? What, where did you get that information from?
What are you talking about? 100 grams is legal, am I wrong?
No, it's not.
It's the second time he was corrected.
What county is this?
This is in Hamilton County.
Hamilton County, 100 grams is legal.
So the kid is kind of right here, but he's also very wrong. Uh, recreational pot use, which is totally what this guy is using the pot. It's not like medicinal pot, right? He doesn't have a pot cart. Uh, recreational pot use is, is illegal in Ohio, but there will be no fine, jail or criminal record for those found with 100 grams of pot or less. So I'm guessing you can still get the pot taken away, like the cops will confiscate it? You're just not gonna get in trouble, right?
Two months ago, it got passed, 100 grams. You guys don't take it, no fucking ticket. I know I'm right here, dude. Don't try to fuck me like I'm dumb.
Okay.
I'm right here.
If you'd like to come down and file a complaint against these officers, you can do it in person.
No, bullshit, I want my weed back. It was only four grams and it happened at like 2:30 last night. Did those motherfuckers turn in any weed? Did they say any weed or I guarantee you, they put it right in their fucking pockets.
Yeah, that's the theory of this guy. They, they took his weed and smoked it themselves. And really, could you blame the cops? After all, this is prestige weed.
Okay, what's your wife's name?
Hey, I'm not trying to get out all this information out, man. I just want my weed back.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not illegal, uh, he should have no problem giving up his name, where this took place and his wife's name, right? You've got nothing to worry about, but he doesn't want to give any information whatsoever. He just wants his weed back, man!
You called me, you are complaining that these officers...
I know how it's all working. I feel like you're just trying to trap me right now and I'm not falling into that game, man. All I want is my motherfucking weed back. You know, can you at least answer me a question? Did them two cops that were in Sharonville last night, did they turn in any weed?
What's your wife's name?
Marilyn Manson is my wife's name.
Hot wife. He's one of those beautiful people.
Answer me the simple question. Did any Sharonville cops turn in any weed last night? They didn't, they took my weed and they stuck it in their fucking pockets.
I'm trying to figure out why this guy was in Sharonville. Like, why was he staying at a hotel in Sharonville? There's like a convention center, there's always like weird shows going on there, like the Home and Garden Show. I can't imagine this guy and his wife were there for something like that. Otherwise, uh, there's nothing in Sharonville, except for maybe prestige weed. That might be a reason to go to Sharonville.
Okay, what's your wife's name?
My wife said it was some young guy and some bald fat...
Well, we did have a detective fat fucker come in with some confiscated weed. "Hey fat fucker, you still got the weed back there?" Yeah, he's got it. Huh? Oh, he's got some of it. He says, "You're right, that is some prestige shit."
Yo, where's my weed ticket then? If it's not legal, they took my... You know, but anyway, I can tell this is a losing situation. I just want you to look into it. Last night, 2:30, there were two cops here that stole my weed. You know, and that's it. You have a good evening, sir. Thank you.
Very polite, aside from all the obscenities. Well, there you go. A guy very under, you know, understandably upset that his weed was lost. Maybe Santa will fill your stockings this year with that, uh, good broccoli boom boom bush. There might just be a happy ending after all. All right, uh, let's move on now. Speaking of Chris Kringle, he certainly granted my holiday wish. All I really wanted for Christmas this year was a new Norman Wicks video. By the way, this is how I'm making, uh, today's episode of DV Christmas themed. It's, uh, every sound effect is just gonna have jingle bells played underneath it. For instance, you know, later on in the program, if we have a news story from Palm Beach County, I will play...
Fuck you if you're not from Palm Beach County.
See? Instant Christmas. It's the lazy way to record a holiday special. Try it the next time you're hosting a television program, radio broadcast or vaudeville like show. Anyway, back to the main event here, we've got a new Norman Wicks video. And if you don't remember who Norman is, he's this crotchety old man always getting into fights with people. He likes to cause a scene. He's homeless, he's an old dude, he lives with his, uh, adult son out of a car. But you know, even homeless people can be assholes. That's why we're featuring Norman. It's not because he's homeless, it's because he's an asshole. They do boneheaded shit all the time. Now, you know, they live in Portland, Oregon, which is a pretty fucking like hippie dippy place. Portland is, I think, is pretty accommodating towards homeless people. Like if you're going to be homeless, if you have to be, I think Portland's a good option. Norman doesn't agree. So like Norman and his kid, like park their car in places they shouldn't and then they freak out when they get tickets. And that's pretty much what happened here. According to Norman, he says, "This is my son. He suffers from PTSD. He's being awakened by a city official who put a tow warning on my vehicle. You cannot be rude to him when he's sleeping. He may look awake, but he's still sleeping, strange as it sounds." That does sound pretty strange. "We suffer a lot of harassment by and for the police." All right, let's take a listen here. What, what happened?
You're a public official. When I say you're harassing me, you have to stop. I'm not in a fucking car asshole!
You know, we play a lot of interactions with cops and, and, you know, altercations in general. Now, it doesn't even have to have anything to do with police. But you always have to question those videos because they always start at convenient times, right? Like the video may start with, uh, a person throwing a punch, but you don't know what led up to that punch. Maybe someone punched first. People are very careful to crop and edit out things that don't make them look good. Norman doesn't abide by those rules. He starts his video out in the middle of screaming at a police officer. "You son of a bitch! You're not allowed to yell at me if I yell at you first." Like what, I don't know what his argument there is. "If I say you're harassing me, you have to stop." It's not like a get out of jail free card. It's not like those are magic words that are like gonna paralyze the official. Just because you say you're being harassed doesn't mean you're being harassed in reality. Could you imagine every time someone says, "You're harassing me," the police are like, "Okay, well, we, I guess we gotta go. Nothing we can do here. We just gotta let the bank robbery play out, I guess." He said we were being mean to him. I don't want to get written up for that, right? All right, I'm sorry, let's go back to the video here.
I'm not in a fucking car asshole! You're harassing me and I'm not in a car! You don't get to do that! You have to go! No, you won't! Because I'm gonna call your fucking official! Now go away asshole! Go the fuck away! I don't care who you are! Get the fuck away from me! Quit fucking harassing me! Get the fuck away from me!
He's got some pipes on him, man. For an old dude? I think Norman's in his eighties at this point.
You're harassing me! You're a public official motherfucker! Get the fuck out of here! You understand me? Leave! Leave!
How this man hasn't given himself a heart attack yet is astounding.
Leave your live motherfucker! I have police that watch my live videos! Get the fuck away from me! Get out! Quit talking shit! Fuck you!
You fucking punk!
You ain't even in a parking fucking official car. You're just a fucking asshole hired by Par. How much dope did they sell you?
Par is a lumber company, I guess. Um, and I think maybe they're, they're parked outside of a Par lumber store or yard or something.
Par lumber sells drugs! They sell drugs!
Well, don't disparage the business where you're parked at, come on.
Par lumber sells drugs!
By any chance, do they sell prestige weed? I'm just asking for a friend. Meanwhile, Norman Jr., uh, is still sleeping. I have a hard time believing that. He actually does get out of the car and he's trying to figure out if, uh, a citation was given to them.
There's nothing on the dash, is there? There's nothing up there. You see a ticket?
There is a ticket plastered on the back of their car. Uh, one thing I've noticed is, uh, they've got a whole setup going on here. So they live out of their car, there's like pants hung outside of the window, I guess to dry, laundry day. And then on the sidewalk, they've set up a tent as well. It is a bit much. Like if you're the company that, that's operating and you've got these people living out of their car, drying their clothes outside of their vehicle, setting up tents and stuff, it is a distraction. Customers don't want to deal with that, right?
It just says failure for, for registration, tow warning for registration. They can't do that in fucking coronavirus bullshit right now.
You fucking assholes! Yeah, I don't know if you could still use COVID as an excuse to get out of this shit, like, uh, registering your car, getting your license renewed. That worked for a good year and a half. We all took advantage of that, but I think the moment they, uh, they stopped making us wear masks and showing our vaccine cards, party's over, man. You gotta take the good with the bad. There's no more lockdown, but the flip side is we all have responsibilities again.
There's something here that's checked for it. My socks are fucking wet.
I mean, it's always like mass confusion. Meanwhile, this has happened 18,000 times to these people. Every day they've got, you know, they get a new ticket. Or, or they, you know, they're dealing with the cops.
Call his superiors. Look at that fucking crap he put on there. It's not even a regular fucking ticket. You don't even get a warning. You're supposed to get a fucking warning.
Well, there you go. That's what Norman and his son have been up to recently. Thank you for that Christmas present. I love our stable of, uh, regular utards. We have enough of them now that, uh, you know, sometimes these utards will take extended breaks, like we'll go months without hearing from Norman Wicks, but it's always a treat when he comes back. Likewise, Galileo 2333. Well, he's, he doesn't really ever go away, he's always posting stuff. Some of it is just, you know, insane babbling that I can't even comprehend, so I don't feature it here on the podcast, but I think we should check in with him right before Christmas, right? Uh, Galileo, take it away.
Hi, this is Galileo 2333. I need to expand on my conspiracy theory about the space shuttle Columbia.
Yes, for those of you, uh, who don't live here in the United States or don't follow space disasters, uh, the Columbia Space Shuttle, uh, was destroyed, blew up, uh, on reentry. Ship launched just fine, they went on their little two week mission on reentry. The, the wing was punctured somehow and the whole fucking thing blew up. Everyone died and now Galileo is going to link that to sex offenders somehow?
Um, and how that was, uh, you know, my theory that it was a ritual sacrifice.
Oh, ritual sacrifice.
Connected with, um, you know, meant to signify banning sex tourism, banning child, you know, banning adults from going overseas and having sex with children in foreign places, you know?
Yeah, this man has a one track mind. All roads lead back to kiddie fucking.
The United States Code 18, Subsect 2423, to protect that. Uh, yeah.
There's so many questions, like how would killing astronauts help keep sex offenders from fucking kids, right?
A lot of the countries are raising...
Who are they sacrificed, sacrificed for? Like a demon or a god or something?
Uh, yeah, age of consent should be abolished, you know, worldwide. Guys should be able to have sex with seven year old girls.
Seven, okay.
And that should be, you know, perfectly fine. It should be worldwide like that.
I always thought it was a little older, but no, Gal, Galileo likes them real young, single digits.
Anyway, um, here's another thing about the space shuttle Columbia, um, and about, um, about the 1979 movie Prophecy.
Look, I, I'm here simply for the ritual sacrifice of the Columbia Space Shuttle crew. I don't really care about the movie Prophecy, so I'm gonna fast forward that part.
Um, you know, it's, I guess they, um, they performed this ritual sacrifice possibly to appease the spirit of Katotan.
Who is Katotan? Galileo has an answer.
Katotan might have been like the original name of Columbia. Um, you know, I, I guess an indigenous or, you know, Native American woman who was raped by Christopher Columbus. And it's like her vengeful spirit is like Katotan.
So far, I gotta say, this theory of yours is a bit of a stretch. The name Columbia is kind of like Katotan and Katotan is an Indian woman who was raped.
I think, uh, some kind of a group got together, some kind of occult organization. Uh, you know, the aviation, aerospace and aviation industry is known to be very highly connected with the occult.
How else do you think these fucking space shuttles can fly? It's witchcraft, man! Lingardium Levioso!
Uh, yeah, so, um, they might have sacrificed this space shuttle, you know, actually it was the astronauts, they sacrificed, you know, human sacrifice ritual to appease a vengeful spirit of an indigenous woman who was raped by European men. Uh, yeah, Katotan is like, um, you know, she's like a Columbia. You know, Columbia is a woman's name for the United States and it originally, you know, it's often depicted as, as a Native American woman, Columbia. And it's like Columbus, you know? It's like the first woman ever to be, you know, maybe raped by Christopher Columbus.
Okay, all right, I think we've heard enough. We get your conspiracy theory. It's rock solid, makes total sense. It's airtight. You know, in 1492 or something, Christopher Columbus raped a native woman and now as a way to say we're sorry, we killed a bunch of astronauts in a ritual sacrifice, which also had the bonus effect of banning pedophilia. I don't know exactly why it took the Columbia space shuttle disaster for us to get around to banning pedophilia, but there it is. Thank you, Galileo. Hey, let's never check in with him again. At the very least, uh, no more conspiracy theory videos. Finally, before we get into the news, I have a very short clip here. You know, one of the biggest components of the holiday season is shopping. Gotta buy them presents. I have got a, a bit of a confrontation here. Have you guys seen those tweets or Facebook posts from, uh, angry white women who are like, guys, I'm sorry, I just have to get this off my chest. I'm so worked up over this, but don't you guys feel like the word Karen is really a slur? A slur on the same level as the N-word? I think it's worse than being called the N-word, and let me tell you why. And then she goes on with some fucking insane idea, right? Like just because someone thinks I am a Karen doesn't mean I'm a Karen. Meanwhile, N-words really are N-words. It's like, whoa, you cannot say that. But it's true. Uh, white women are getting very, very annoyed with being called a Karen. And I think I have a good example of this. Uh, this takes place at a Big Lots, which is like a, uh, you know, it's, it's a shitty store. It's like a step up from Dollar General, maybe two or three steps, actually. I think it's like Dollar General, then Family Dollar, and then Big Lots. I think the cashier calls this customer a Karen and, uh, that set her off. Again, you know, the video starts in the middle of all the action.
Do you see this? She's calling me a bitch? I'm handling.
You just call me Karen. How dare you?
I'm a minor. You call me a bitch.
How dare you call me that?
See how worked up she is? Meanwhile, the customer called an underage girl working at Big Lots, you know, at, you know, as her after school job, a bitch. What's worse? I mean, it's obvious, right?
How dare you?
I'm a minor. You call me a bitch.
How dare you call me that? Yes, I do. Get, get me, get me. Are you?
I don't even know where my manager's at.
Call the police. You're not allowed to call someone a Karen in public? That's a cunt crime.
Know where my manager's at.
She's starting coming at me crazy. She's just coming at me.
I'm coming at you crazy?
You call me a Karen, little girl?
Look at you.
It's funny because one of the things I see on the counter, like, uh, the checkout counter, uh, are some maxi pads. Look, it's a heavy flow day for this Karen.
Look at you. Look at you. Look at you.
How dare you call me a Karen?
Paid enough to deal with shit like this. I don't get paid enough to deal with shit like this.
That's when the video cuts off and you, you sorta start to hear, I think, the genesis of this fight. It all had to do with bagging. Karen here wanted a bag. Shit, this is her side of the story. She wanted the cashier to bag something. The cashier was giving her some attitude. My theory is that the cashier is a bit of a bitch, you know? And, and she's like, uh, oh, you want a bag and just like threw a bag at the customer to, to have the customer bag her own shit. And then the customer replied with a snotty remark about how this was supposed to be her job to bag it. And then the cashier calls her a Karen. It's bitch versus bitch, really. Again, I'm just speculating. I, I heard just a little bit about bagging something. But this goes back to my main argument where it's like, these videos start in the middle. I mean, I know it's hard to actually start recording before a fight breaks out, but I really wish these people would try. Get some store security cam footage or something. I need as much information as possible. My whole job here is to, uh, make judgment calls. Anything to make, uh, my work easier would be great. All right. Uh, and with that, let's get into the crazy bizarre twist of the fucked up news. Hey, if you're not a member of the Distorted View Sideshow, what are you waiting for? Help support this insanity. Become a true and honorable freak today. Memberships are very inexpensive and we still have some holiday deals going on. It's a great time to sign up. If you do, if you sign up right now, you'll be able to listen to, uh, the past two episodes of DV, which were both Sideshow exclusive. Oh, it would make a nice holiday, uh, present for yourself and for me. Come on, join the club. Be one of my buddies. Sign up for the Sideshow right now, superfreaksideshow.com. If you happen to use Spotify or Apple Podcasts, you can sign up for access right in those apps. You don't get, uh, full access to the archives that way, but you get all of the new free shows and Sideshow exclusive episodes. You don't have to log into any websites or mess around with RSS feeds. They pop up right in the app. And it takes just a second to sign up. Again, for more information, check out distortedview.com and superfreaksideshow.com. If you want to sign up in the Spotify app or Apple Podcast app. Uh, finally, the last way to help support the program, we've got a Patreon account, patreon.com/distortedview. Again, if you're thinking about getting me something for Christmas, cash is king. Become a Patreon. Patreon.com/distortedview. Thank you to all of my patrons and all of you Sideshow members this year. You guys are the reason I'm able to continue doing this and everyone benefits, right? So thank a Sideshow member today. Three very quick stories now. First up, oh, what a way to go out. It's our final episode before Christmas and I've got a story from our most fucked up states. Say it with me. You know who sang that song? The moon star. I am the moon star. Uh, yes, we've got a story from Miami. A woman who was caught on video throwing a computer monitor at an American Airlines ticket agent at Miami International Airport appeared before a judge on Wednesday. What's funny is I ran across this video today and I decided not to play it for you at, at the top of the program because I couldn't understand what she was saying. She was screaming about something, but it was, it was like, it was too short and it didn't make any sense to me. Well, now we've got some context. Camilla McMillie, 25, is facing charges of aggravated battery, criminal mischief, and disorderly conduct. During the hearing, her bond was set at $4,500. Circuit Judge Mindy Glaser found probable cause for the charges against McMillan. Yeah, especially because like this was all caught on camera. Well, you could just see her freaking out, throwing the monitor. She obviously did this. According to investigators, on Tuesday, McMillie was traveling from Alabama to New York City. She was connecting in Miami. McMillie checked into her flight, uh, at gate D39 after being rebooked for missing her previous flight. Again, that was her fault, right? The airline did nothing wrong there so far. There's no reason why this woman should be freaking out at the airline, uh, or the ticket agent. Quote, "While the subject was with the gate agent, her two minor children walked away without notice." So, um, she was just being a bad mother. She wasn't paying attention to her kids. They wandered away? Once again, I feel like I need to reiterate, this is not American Airlines' fault. All right, so she's, uh, talking to the gate agent. Her two minor children walked away without notice to use nearby restrooms. Once the subject noticed the children were not with her, she became irate. Not at the kids, but with, uh, everyone involved with American Airlines. She began to scream, demanding the agent find her children. Yeah, cuz now it's the gate agent's problem. No. First of all, you don't fuck around in airports or on airplanes. You're gonna get banned. The second you, you know, start raising your voice, you endanger girl. All right, so I do have the clip here. Let's, uh, take a listen to McMillie in action. There goes a keyboard from a computer. Some other devices. I think that was the monitor. So that's what I couldn't understand. I thought she was speaking a different language. It's find my children, bro. Find my children. That part I'm not gonna be able to understand. I can't tell if the person filming is like with her, a friend of hers? I hope I don't come off, uh, sounding racist here, but, uh, what the fuck is happening with language here in America? Are, are we just giving up? I mean, I realize things change. People have different dialects, different accents. But it's like, we're not even trying to, to enunciate or use words anymore. It's like, we're all just so lazy. We're letting sounds fall out of our mouth. And again, this spans, uh, races. It's not just a, a black person thing. I've, I've heard white people, we can't, I can't understand either. But it's literally like. She's not drunk. It's just like, it's too much work to get those syllables out. Everything ends, uh, like it's such, it's an effort to get these words out. By the way, I looked up this woman on LinkedIn. She's head of communications for DuPont. No, that's not true. Investigators said she pulled the boarding pass reader off of the wooden counter, damaging the equipment and countertop area. And as she continued to scream, she grabbed the computer monitor and threw it at the gate agent. Custom and border prote, uh, protection officers who were nearby detained McMillie until Miami-Dade Police Officers finally arrived. McMillie was placed under arrest and charged accordingly. The gate agent sustained bruising to her shoulder. Yeah, those monitors are hard and heavy. Trudy Hooker, nice, who was traveling to the Bahamas with her husband Ernie, uh, said, "My reaction is that I think this was a little overboard." No shit. She should not have acted so quickly like this. The couple added, "This was too violent. She should've taken more time to find out where her kids were." The person behind the counter had nothing to do with her kids wandering away. Someone could've gotten hurt. Another passenger named Jim said, "This was just an overreaction, but it was a dangerous one." "American Airlines said in a statement, 'Acts of violence against our team members are not tolerated and we are committed to working closely with law enforcement in their investigation,' yada, yada, yada." An airport spokesperson, uh, named Greg Chin is expecting a surge in passengers this holiday season, which of course is going to cause more stress and more crazy people throwing monitors and shit. "Exercise caution and exercise patience," he said. "Prepare for the worst." And don't take it out on our airline staff or airport staff. Don't risk destroying your holiday plans because you lost your temper at the airport." And that's one to grow on. All right, second story we have for you today. Alex Jones is back. He's not doing so well. He's going through a lot of stuff right now. He apparently lashed out at his audience this past Tuesday for believing what he said was propaganda from the mainstream media following a bankruptcy hearing. It's kinda hard to spin this, right? So, you know, Alex Jones is in bankruptcy court. His audience is like, oh my God, he might go bankrupt. And then Alex Jones is like, no, that's just the mainstream media lying to you. It's like, but yes, but you actually were in court. There are bankruptcy proceedings happening. I think the real issue is that, uh, the money is starting to dry up. Cuz people are like, what's the point of giving Alex Jones money if he's just gonna declare bankruptcy and everything's gonna go away soon? Uh, during his Infowars broadcast, Jones faulted media reports that said he had been stripped of some bankruptcy protection. The broadcaster noted that his attorneys actually agreed to the court order. Jones said that even if a judge granted him a $1.3 million salary, he eventually would not be able to afford food. Well, it certainly sounds like he's going bankrupt. So the mainstream media got it, right? I'm confused. Again, I've got some clips here. Let's see if we can decipher this madness.
This place is on the edge of insolvency.
All right, way to reassure your audience, Alex. Giving me money is like flushing it down the toilet right now.
We are in bankruptcy to try to get through this and to try to minimize the bills. And then a bunch of the audience thinks, well, he's going off air. I'm not gonna support. No, it's chapter 11, subchapter five. All we gotta do is have a plan, make it through the plan, and we stay on air indefinitely and they can't shut us down. And we get our appeals.
Now, he said this before the part where he's like, I'm not gonna be able to afford food anymore. He's kinda all over the map.
Which it's a liberating feeling. I kinda feel good in this fight that I'm gonna get down to the point where I can't buy groceries. That makes me feel actually like I've done my job. I'm actually liking this in a way.
Yeah, I've been in the same position pretty much, uh, throughout my entire twenties. I couldn't afford groceries. I did not feel that it was liberating. I thought it was kinda constrictive. I'm pretty sure that's why I have heart problems now, ulcers, and crippling anxiety. It all stems from my twenties when I couldn't afford groceries.
I'm gonna, cuz unlike Fauci, I don't tell lies. You got that?
Uh, we always gotta.
That's my secret.
Drag Fauci into this shit. The old man is retired now. Let him be. He's not some criminal mastermind. He told you to wear a mask. You want him hunted down for that? It's ridiculous.
My brain becomes more powerful every day because I've trained myself not to lie to myself, not to lie to my audience, and not to lie in front of God.
That being said, how dare the mainstream media claim that we're going bankrupt? We're fine. Also, I'm taking a $1.3 million pay cut. I can't afford groceries. We're in court, just, just begging them to let us keep the lights on. We are not going bankrupt. But, uh, today's broadcast is gonna be cut short cuz I gotta get to bankruptcy court.
Do whatever you need to, or make the conscious decision that the Democrats couldn't shut us down and the de-banking and the deep state and the censorship couldn't shut us down.
How much does Alex Jones owe the Sandy Hook people now, isn't it like, um, are we up to like close to two billion?
But the fact that it's just right there where we're almost where we need to be and we're just almost gonna beat these people. It just pisses me off.
Alex Jones pissed off? Never seen that before. Uh, I'm checking out one of these news stories that, uh, you know, Alex Jones says is part of the mainstream media. So I don't know what to believe here, but apparently, uh, Infowars' monthly revenue has dropped to $1.9 million, which is still a lot, way more than DV makes, uh, from, uh, pre-bankruptcy levels of six to seven million. The company has about $1.8 million in cash. Well, now I do have a little more than that in the bank. Those, uh, Tim Henson face jizz rags were real hot sellers this year. Sold a cool million, uh, of those things. I wish. All right, uh, quote, "We really got to get back to that level of production to make this a profitable company and try to pay back our creditors," said Jones's attorney. So Joan, Jones is like, uh, petitioning the court, saying like, look, I wanna, I wanna take a salary of 1.3 million. Meanwhile, the attorney for the Sandy Hook families opposed that request for an increased salary. Surprise, surprise, they really just wanna keep squeezing his nuts. So I'm sure this saga is not yet over with. Uh, final story we have for you today, though. Once again, let's turn our attention back to our most fucked up state. Say it with me. Oh, this one is so great. I'm glad we're ending the show on this. Um, you know, I can't tell you how many times we've played clips from city council meetings, school board meetings. There are a lot of nutty people out there that want their voice heard. Florida is about to, uh, outshine them all. Take a look at the chapter artwork. "City commission meetings can often be a bland affair to all but the most dedicated, civically minded citizens, but a trio of women briefly spiced up a discussion about yard waste at a meeting in Fort Lauderdale this past Tuesday. A group of citizens who waltzed over to the lectern wore skintight costumes. One of the women, introduced by Mayor Dean Trantillis as Ms. Crave, made an unusual request. Rather than read on, uh, how about I just play you the audio?"
Um, is Ms. Crave here?
Ms. Crave.
Did you, you signed up to speak? Would you care to speak? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council peoples. You may call me mistress.
Oh, I wonder if any of the council members actually do call them mistress.
I am here standing neutral to the motion approving an agreement for the proprietary purchase of yard waste processing and disposal. I do, however, find it interesting that you will spend almost $1 million to hide your secrets down the drain. Hiding that condom I know you use to cheat on your spouse with. So, I propose that you use a quarter of that mill to support doms and subs in Broward County, to build a dungeon created for us by us, the taxpayers and voting citizens.
You gotta see this chick as she's talking. She looks like Daft Punk with tits. It's fantastic. Uh, yeah, she's got some sort of crazy visor helmet, latex outfit. There's two women behind her, also both with helmets. It's like these are, uh, S and M mistresses from the future. Space doms from the great beyond.
In closing, do not let this glamorous look distract you from doing your duty to take my demand. I look forward to spanking each and every single one of you at the new esteemed dungeon. You are dismissed.
Okay, thank you. And happy holidays to you.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak? There being none, uh.
City manager, are there any districts that have a dungeon?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Well, there we go.
I thought there was one at the Sapphire.
No, no, please.
I, I know there were a couple of proposed clubs of, of variety of natures from a couple of years ago. I thought they were mostly in District Two though.
Mostly, we have a lot of things going on in District Two, um, but no, I don't think.
Right, you get the idea. The real question is, who the hell is this mistress and why did she make this request? It appears to be a PR stunt of some kind. A source said that the trio was handing out business cards for a nightclub called Crave Miami, located near Miami International Airport. Lot of news taking place around the airport area. Uh, a December 7th news release announcing the club's opening at the side of the former Pink Pussycat on Northwest 36th Street described the venue as "part nightclub, art space, sexy circus, burlesque, and performance space." "Crave is a no rules, no labels, no boundaries, fully interactive ultra lounge," it said. The local news left a voicemail for the nightclub at a number listed on the business card, but, uh, so far, no one has contacted the news back. Ms. Crave's legal name is not yet clear either. It is all a great mystery. I don't know if we've already reserved a featured image over there at distortedview.com and superfreaksideshow.com, but if not, check it out. I'll make Ms. Crave and her friends, uh, the featured image over there. That, my friends, is your distorted news for Thursday. Let's do a couple voicemails and get the hell out of here. All right, I love to hear from you freaks and there are many ways to contact the show. Show@distortedview.com. I'm all over social media, at distorted view on Twitter and Instagram, facebook.com/distortedviewshow, yada, yada, yada. Don't forget our voicemail line, 206-666-4463. Uh, if you pledge at least $5 to our Patreon account, you get access to a special voicemail line where I will play your calls first. As a matter of fact, we have a patron calling in today. So yes, let's hear from him.
Hi, Timmy Boo. It's Itchy Taint calling.
Itchy Taint calling into the Patreon line.
Well, I have a, I have a problem. Uh, I was jerking off the other night, uh. Uh, I think it was either, uh, Spank Bank, that, that was it. I found a good clip on that.
Been a while since we featured the Spank Bank.
Chick covered in tats and piercings, yeah, getting fucked doggy style.
Was that like a video site too, Spank Bank?
Probably barely legal, you know, natural, big boobs and thick ass. Anyway.
The Wank Bank is the, um, uh, masturbator's hotline. Let's get in the, so there's Spank Bank and Wank Bank.
Besides the point. Uh, well, I was kinda noticed that I was looking at her arms while she was getting fucked.
Okay.
And I was kinda like, what is that? And, and I realized that it was scar tissue from cutting herself. And, uh, my erection kinda went away, uh.
Oh, those troubled girls don't make you get all hot and horny?
I have, I don't know if you're familiar with this. I have something called empathy. Uh, you know, empathy.
Not familiar with it? Is that an English word?
Concern with other people.
Is that like French for something?
Feelings and well-being. I don't know. Maybe you have some, some of that towards Lord Douche. I don't, I don't know.
No.
But, uh, whatever happened to you? You're, you're just jerking off and you.
Does it have anything to do with empanadas? Does it have anything to do with empanadas? Is that like, 'cause that kind of sounds like the empathy empanada. Sounds like a, like a pastry version of an empanada, like a sweet empanada.
The situation you're jerking off to.
I don't think you know what empathy really means.
Blow your load. All right, anyway, just glad I should relay that.
I would take that as a challenge, you know? Like, uh, how dare you dick for failing me? And I would, I would look solely at cutter porn and, uh, until I'm able to ejaculate successfully. You need some of that can-do spirit. You gave up way too early. I'm actually a little disappointed in you, you know? All right, let's, uh, listen to another voicemail here. Yes, caller? Yes, caller? 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 Yes, caller? 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 Can you believe I waited 10 seconds? There was 10 seconds of silence, where I was literally hoping someone would, would talk, right? I really gave them the benefit of the doubt, and what was I rewarded with? The Facts of Life theme song. Fuck you! By the way, for a shitty sitcom, the beginning of the theme song shreds way too hard. It has no right being that rockin'. Now, I was, uh, I was a kid in the eighties, so I, you know, I remember The Facts of Life. I mainly remember it due to reruns. There were a gazillion different versions of the theme song. I think they all had the same lyrics, but the music was a lot different. So, like, for instance, Season 2 sounded like this.
You take the good, you take the bad.
Not nearly as rockin'. It was really only the last season that things, uh, were kicked up a notch. And the reason for all of this is because The Facts of Life started in the late seventies, right? And it went all the way through to the late eighties. It had quite the run. But by 1988, boy, did like, the sets and everything, uh, really reflect the decade. Like, one of the things is, uh, you know, in The Facts of Life, it takes place at, or part of it takes place in a store. And I think at first it was like a, uh, like a chocolate store, candy store. And it was all like wood, you know, like wood finishings, very late seventies, early eighties. And by 1988, it was like, oh, like neon green and pink. And then we get the, uh, the rockin' intro here. Some studio musicians really shredding on that electric guitar. I feel like the vocals should have gone a little harder. Should have updated that to match the, uh, the rockin' music. Well, missed opportunity, what can I say? All right, let's do, uh, another voicemail here.
Hey, Boo Boo!
Oh, this one has words, great!
Um, so, two things for you. So I called earlier, uh, in the week, 'cause you posted, um, an episode where you featured Trump's NFT ad.
Right.
And that was the guy who heard like the smoke detector in the background.
Yes.
And I guess the freaks did too, 'cause they did some freaking saluthin' and figured out that, um, they raised the volume of the music, 'cause there's like a bunch of like smoke detectors going off throughout the ad.
Really?
This is the funniest thing. Um, and the second thing was-
I'm gonna have to listen to that ad again, 'cause I did not hear the smoke detector. And you know, uh, I'm tuned into that, that sound.
So I just listened to the day's episode with the women shoving Christmas decorations up their vaginas.
Merry Christmas.
That's like a whole thing. Women and like men too will just shove things that are not dildos in their orifices.
Yeah, I did know that.
It's like a whole subreddit, it's like r slash not a dildo.
Oh, oh, there's a subreddit for it.
It is ridiculous. Like, you'll see women having contests, like shoving markers up their orifices.
Oh.
It's crazy.
I'm gonna need to subscribe, follow that thread.
Anyway, I love you. Have a happy Christmas to me boo.
Thank you very much! Same to you, jagoo, jagoo, jagoo! All right, uh, that is all the time we have on this edition of the program. Why don't you guys email me? Show@distortedview.com. Distortedview.com is our official website, voicemail line for you, 206-666-4463. That's 206-660- Oh, God, is it, oh, God!
Now go away asshole! Go the fuck away!
Spread the distortion, STD. Tell all your friends about the show. Don't forget to give us a five-star rating, a thumbs up or like wherever you can rate and review podcasts. Guys, have a great, happy, uh, holiday, Christmas. If you celebrate that thing, if you don't, you're still probably getting a long weekend out of this. So that's cool, enjoy that. As I mentioned earlier in the week, uh, we're gonna be taking Monday off. I do plan on posting a best of show, so something will pop up on the feed. And then I'll be back on Tuesday doing a show for everyone, so be on the lookout for that. Until then, Merry Christmas! Bye, everybody! I'm a Christmas tree! I'm a Christmas tree! Everybody hangs their ornaments on me!
This has been another excellent podcast from the Scrub Media Group. Learn more at scrub.net.
Well, we did it. We made it to Christmas. I've got one final 12 days of Distorted View savings deal for you. And that's 20% off your order of $50 or more, or 30% off your order of $100 or more. Just use promo code 20 or 30. Just the numbers. 3-0-2-0, depending on how much you spend. I mean, you have to do the fucking math there, but spend at least $50, can use promo code 20, get 20% off. If you spend at least $100, woo, get 30% off using promo code 3-0. Merry Christmas, freaks.